Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. All is good. We need to reinforce the 105th order. Would you please stand for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, of your God, is the physical.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I'm sorry that we ran out of seats. I don't think that's happening anymore. If you hear it, say it again. Cages to the agenda. Yes, we have a biased agenda tonight. Highlighted yellow. Got that copy. You have a forum, so let's move on to the most exciting, the best part of the evening, athletes. Welcome. We've got a bunch of these tonight because the ones that says sports and activities we missed a few. So we have three that are makeup from January and February. We have four March winners and everybody's here tonight, so that'll be good. We're going to start with Alexi Rodriguez. Any comments?
Okay. To the parents of Adeline Jones, I am pleased to award Adeline with my superintendent award for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Although Addie did not start her year in my classroom, she quickly became an important part of our classroom family the moment she arrived. Adeline exemplifies the kind of student one can always rely on diligently completing all assignments to her best ability. She consistently follows the rules and expectations both inside and outside the classroom. She also serves as a role model for peers and younger students demonstrating exceptional qualities of leadership. While often quiet, Addie possesses a remarkable level of confidence and pride when standing up for what she believes in or is passionate about. Her unique sense of style is one of my favorite things about her. Adeline's engaging personality allows her to build connections with those around her. I truly appreciate her willingness to embrace vulnerability and growth. Addie learns from her mistakes and values constructive feedback in her pursuit of becoming the best version of herself. Thank you, Addie, for being an outstanding classmate and student. Always remember that you are capable of achieving anything you set your mind to. The sky is only the beginning for you.
A quick reminder that if the superintendent award winners will stick around to do that photo, we're all finished. And their teachers. Kelly Foreman and her teacher, Mrs. Porcrey. I saw.
Right. To the parents of Kelly Foreman. It brings me, it brings me great joy to write this letter nominating Kelly as my superintendent award winner for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. There are so many amazing qualities about Kelly that make her the perfect choice for this award. Kelly is more than deserving of this award and brings so much joy to our fourth grade classroom. She is a wonderful student. She comes in every morning with a positive attitude and ready to learn. Kelly does not let any challenge that she may face during a school day stop her from trying her hardest. She is always motivated to complete her work and do her best. The growth she has made this year is remarkable, and her positive can-do attitude plays a huge role in this. Not only is Kelly a wonderful student, but she is an amazing friend. She goes out of her way to make sure all students feel welcome in our classroom. In our classroom, we are a class family, and Kelly truly practices this idea every day. Her kindness spreads outside of our classroom and throughout our school. She is always including people in games during recess, saying good morning to students and staff in the morning, and making sure people feel safe and happy in the building. I am so excited to see the amazing things Kelly does as she continues to grow. Kelly is already doing wonderful things and is going to continue to do so in the future. I am blessed to have such a remarkable student in my class. Thank you, Kelly, for being a kind, thoughtful, and caring individual.
Next, we have Bowen White, this teacher, this is.
To the family of Bowen White, it's my pleasure to recommend Bowen for the March Superintendent Award. Bowen's been a student of mine for many years, and it's been a privilege or adventure, I'd say, to watch him grow into the young man he is today. This year, he's taken on the role as a student aide in my seventh grade math class, which in reality, he's actually become so much more. He's been a mentor, a leader, and a role model for these younger students. When he helps them with math, he doesn't just point them to the answer, he patiently walks them through the process, ensuring they fully understand how to solve each problem. They'll even throw in challenge problems for those kids who may need just a little bit extra. Beyond academics, Bowen has built meaningful connections with these students, making learning fun with his balance of humor, kindness, and patience. He has a playful rapport with them, and it's clear that they admire and enjoy having him around. His actions show these students that learning isn't just about getting the right answer, it's about effort, persistence, and growth. In fact, I've even had one student ask what grade they need to be in so that they can be a student aide just like Bowen. What truly makes Bowen an outstanding role model isn't just how he helps others, it's how he leads by example. He takes his academics seriously, often using his free time to work on coursework for his college class or to finish up scholarships. At the same time, he also balances the demands of playing a sport every season, dedicating himself to improving his skills while staying on top of his slow work. His work ethic, perseverance, and positive attitude set an example for our younger students, showing them that success comes from dedication, commitment, and the willingness to put in the effort. I've had the privilege of teaching Bowen in seventh and eighth grade math, and again in high school geometry. I've also been his golf coach clearly since freshman year. So while, uh, wait, I lost my slot. Watching him dedicate himself to improving both his skills and his character. While he'd prefer I leave this part out, I think it's important. Like any teenager, he's made the occasional not-so-great choice. But what sets him apart from his peers is his accountability. He's always taken full responsibility for his actions, learned from them, and come out a better person because of it. That level of integrity speaks volumes about the kind of person he's becoming. This fall, Bowen plans to take the next step in his journey by attending Oregon State University to study mechanical engineering. And I have no doubt that the same dedication, perseverance, and leadership you show here at Report will carry him far in his future career. Bowen, I chose you for this award not just because of the role model you are in my classroom today, but because of the hardworking, well-grounded, and resilient person you've become over the years. You embody exactly what we hope for in our students, someone who works hard, learns from challenges, and positively impacts those around them. You're the kind of student that Report is proud to send into the world, knowing you will carry forward the values of dedication, responsibility, and leadership. I have no doubt that you will continue to make a difference wherever you go.
Samsa is her teacher, Mr. Vazquez.
Uh, to the family of Samsa Shetso. It is my immense pleasure to work with Samsa, the superintendent's work for the month of March. It has been a true pleasure working with Samsa over the course of this school year, and I have been impressed with her growth through the entire school year. Samsa has responded to my guidance and has become an excellent class leader. She shares strategies with her classmates to help them become better students. She's very, she's a very friendly person, and she is well-liked as a classmate. She is always trying to motivate her classmates to do the right thing, and she leads by example. Samsa is an excellent reader, and she has a hunger for reading. She enjoys talking about the books that she's read, and she is always asking about different book series. I sense an enormous amount of sincerity in her questions, and her interest in her studies has grown in leaps and bounds. I look forward to watching her progress throughout the remainder of her school year and into the future as a student. For some says a hardworking student, and I feel that with the constant focus on her studies and her great attitude, she will be very successful in her future pursuits.
Good afternoon. Next, what's in the, is her teacher, Mr. Wright.
I am blessed to have Trinity in my classroom. She has been a tremendous help. Budget cuts we've had. So I want to let her parents know that you've got a really special person here. So at the beginning of the year, I had a class with seven IEP students in it. And my instructional assistant, when we had cuts, got pulled out of the class. That's a lot of kids that need extra help. While this process was going on, Trinity came up to me and asked if she could be a student aide for me. It happened to be that period. And as I was talking to Trinity, instead of having her just be a normal student aide, she's actually acting like an instructional assistant. She's doing the role of a staff member. She has worked wonderfully with kids as the class goes on. Then every once in a while, she gets to do traditional student aide activities as well. With this, I've actually looked at Trinity as more of a colleague this year than as a student. Because her level of maturity is that of another staff member. I thank her from the bottom of my heart.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay, Rainey Taylor and Rainey's teacher, Miss Marison.
So, to the parents of Rainey Taylor, your daughter Rainey has exemplified strengths of character. Strengths of character are core values that benefits one's life. Transition. Rainey moved to Report in the summer of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. She spent most of her sophomore year in person and then went online at RCCS when they started to offer accelerated education courses. When the alternative education program began this fall of two thousand twenty-four, Rainey returned to RCCS. Persistence. Rainey noted, online courses have their ups and downs, which is good if you want to manage yourself. But that's also the downside. You have to manage yourself. What worked? Rainey found a good work spot to do, to do class assignments, and in fast track programs, she's conquering algebra. Currently en route to complete her graduation requirements by spring break. I'm happy to announce today she has accomplished and tackled algebra two, and she is four days away or four, five school days away from um, having all of her graduation credit. Then that's. And then balance. Um, Rainey balances her schoolwork with writing and drawing, creative expressions of her talent. She is writing one of several stories currently, and this was as of January. She was working on chapter fourteen, a hundred and, excuse me, I forgot. Um, a hundred and twenty pages by fifty thousand words. Let me just say that again, currently, that was as of January, she is working on chapter fourteen, a hundred and twenty pages, five hundred thousand words, all while illustrating the characters. So she was doing that in between when she'd take a break from her online work. Curiosity, strengths of character, curiosity. Rainey currently plans to remain near home and has recited on attending Southwestern Oregon Community College. But being curious, Rainey wants to take the armed services vocational aptitude battery or ASVAT test. Quote, "I wanted to see my strengths," she recalls. Rainey attended, or excuse me, Rainey attained exceptional scores, which qualifies her for the military scholarship if she so chooses. So as this recipient of the superintendent's award, please celebrate the strengths of character that your daughter has demonstrated here at Report Community Church.
One more student, Rainey Thomas, and Thomas's future, Mrs. Kay.
To the parents of Thomas Morgan. It is my great pleasure to write this letter about why Thomas is the deserving recipient of the superintendent's award for the month of March, two thousand twenty-five. I have known Thomas for a few years now, but only recently had the opportunity to work with him in my own classroom. Since I began as the long-term substitute for Mrs. Molly's math classes in January, it has been a true privilege to work with him. I chose Thomas not just for his academic abilities, but for the positive attitude and impact he has on our classroom environment. From day one, Thomas has shown an incredible commitment to learning. He comes into class every day fully prepared and ready to engage with the lesson. I know that I can rely on Thomas to be one of the few students who start the warm-up without hesitation or prompting, and even help those around him get started if they are stuck. Thomas exhibits exemplary study skills. He takes exceptional notes and reviews them before asking for help. This independent approach to learning speaks to his maturity and commitment, and it has helped him build a solid foundation in that. Thomas isn't afraid to ask questions, and the vast majority of the questions he asks are insightful and well thought out. What's even more impressive is his ability to stay on task and encourage others to do the same. Thomas doesn't just concentrate on completing his own work, he has made a tangible difference in the classroom by supporting his peers and their work as well. Most notably, he's made an incredible difference with a peer who often struggles to stay focused. He regularly checks in with the student, offering help with math problems, or kindly reminding them to stay engaged in the lessons, and the impact of this guidance has been evident in the improvement of, of that student's participation. Thomas, Thomas approaches everything, other students, new concepts, and class discussions with an admirable, admirable amount of patience and grace. This is a quality I'm beyond appreciative of, and I know his classmates are as well. Beyond his academic achievements, it's Thomas's character that truly sets him apart. He's patient, respectful, and always willing to help others. These qualities are not just apparent in my classroom, but everywhere he goes. For instance, Thomas is a cadet teacher in Mr. Kimball's classroom at Highland Elementary. I've heard such incredible and positive things about his patience with the elementary students and his ability to form positive and productive relationships with them. Thomas is a positive presence in any classroom, and I can tell that he's made a lasting impact on both our classroom environment and the students around him. It's a pleasure to teach such a dedicated and kind-hearted student. I want to thank you all for, I want to thank you for all the support and encouragement you have given Thomas. He's an absolute joy to have in class, and I'm so proud of the effort and positivity he brings every single day.
Um, I need to give the teachers one more time and the students one more time up here, because Charlie's going to come in and take a photo of everybody, so we'll get it posted. Please, and if you're a little shorter in the front, a little taller in the back, can you?
Jim, okay, everybody looking at me, and your mom's going to want you to smile, and I'm going to take a few pictures to make sure everybody's eyes are open. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into, uh, community comments. These are individuals may present a community comment and board on agenda items. Please note in the science sheet with Hughes, which item you wish to address until our community comment part. You are limited to do no more than three minutes. You may address the board on a topic not on the agenda. If it not, does not contain to a complaint against a staff member or student. However, the board reserves the right to represent the administrator. Anyone unable to attend the board needs a submit a community comment in a hard copy or you may up to the board secretary. Okay, our first community comment is going to be uh, Cassandra Vaughn.
That's Hannah Barrett.
That's perfect.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Vaughn. Thank you for this time tonight. And we are taking our ladies, the Lady Brave girls here. Um, I've watched almost every school like these ladies play since T-ball and A-Go. Watching the little girls on the field picking daisies become the ladies that they are now, the Lady Brave. The jersey purchase that we are here to talk about tonight was supposed to be a rewarding gift for the seniors, not only for them, but the team as a whole. The reason we wanted all the ladies' names was for the, I should have had. Mine was a little further down. Anyways, calls are completed. Um, the reason we want all the ladies' names on the jerseys was for them to be able to keep them. Uh, now being that the jerseys with the names are just on the five seniors, we would be willing to cover the names for the games, like during the games, you know, the girls will take over the names, like we were told it was a privacy issue. Um, the fact that we followed every rule and did everything we were supposed to do to make this happen for them, just if you told it that it cannot wear them, they cannot have them, let alone even see them. It's very frustrating, but it's mostly heartbreaking for our girls. We meant going through school was not clear in the beginning. I'm sure all of our donors would have rather wrote the check straight to the company to be able to avoid all this and get it done how we thought it would be done. Coach Watts and Coach LeBaron have been very supportive and helpful, trying to figure this issue out, and have gone, gotten nowhere but short answers, and the jersey's taken by the superintendent. We would like an answer from you, our school board, the backbone of our kids, for our community. So if you're here tonight and you've got a few, hopefully get the answer, but the ladies most definitely get it. At least keep the jersey tops with the names for our seniors and wear them. The school can have all pants and the rest of the jerseys after speeding it over, because now we hold that their property of this school. Um, Jeremy and I would love to purchase five more jerseys just for the school to have a whole, you know, flesh of jerseys for next year, so the girls can keep them. Um, if it comes to the point that we cannot have them, wear them, or even see them, we respectfully ask for our money back. Purchase them outside of the school for our girls to wear and keep. Please don't let these uniforms just go sit in the back of the closet for the rest of their lives. Lily McNew and our daughter Kylie Vaughn designed them and got them approved and a thousand percent deserved to support them on Tuesday night's home game and the rest of their season, their last season, being the Lady Brave. Furthermore, there is accusations being spread, being said from administrators at RCCS that some of our old ladies have stole some of the old.
That's your time. Sorry. How much longer?
Like twenty seconds.
It's fine.
Go for it.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
No, I'm good with the awesome. Um, that these schools on the old jerseys sold out, they were forced to wear the new ones. I know these ladies very well and their intentions, and obviously whoever started this accusation doesn't know these ladies, because they would absolutely never do such a thing. Please, for the love of the game and our Lady Brakes, take this into consideration for the future of twenty forty-five Lady Brave softball season. Thank you very much for your time and the proud mom of Kylie Vaughn and the rest of the Lady Brave girls.
Okay, thank you, Sandra. Michelle Bailey.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. I do not have a prepared statement, but I was one of the donors for the already softball uniforms presented to us as that the girls got approval if they went out and raised the money. They were allowed to purchase these uniforms to be worn. Um, I am in the position that these girls deserve to have these uniforms. They went out, they secured the money with the blessing of the school and the superintendent, not the superintendent, the principal, the athletic director, and the coach. Um, if they are not allowed to have their uniforms, I respectfully request my donation back as well, because I donated to the Report Lady Brave softball uniforms for the twenty-five school year, not to get stolen, stolen, and not to be worn.
Thank you, Michelle. Ricky McNew.
As standing, stand before you today as a dedicated supporter of our school softball program and as a parent who, along with others, has invested time, effort, and personal funds to support our athletes. Last year's end of season softball award, senior parents Kylie Vaughn, Cassandra Vaughn, and her husband Jeremy generously offered to purchase new uniforms for our girls' final softball season. This year, seniors Kylie Vaughn and Lily McNew have worked diligently with athletic director Coach Watts and our new softball coach to design uniforms that met school guidelines. Every step of the process was followed properly, ensuring approval from the necessary staff, including the principal's office manager, Sherri Walt, principal Jerry Euling, and Coach Watts. Myself, my mother, Cassandra, and Jeremy Vaughn, as well as several of our employers, all donated files towards these uniforms, which totaled nearly two thousand dollars. Originally, the plan was for the seniors' last names to be on the jerseys, but when this became an issue, the order was adjusted so that all players would have their names included. However, by the time this decision was made, the order had already been placed and it could not be modified. We were later, later given the option to potentially cancel the order, which we attempted, intending to repurchase the jerseys independently, so the school could not claim ownership of it. At this point, we were affirmed that it was too late to cancel the order. The uniforms have since been delivered, fully paid for by donations from parents and employers specifically for our senior athletes. Despite following all necessary steps and receiving approval, we are now being told these jerseys cannot be worn by the superintendent with no clear explanation provided. This is not only frustrating, but deeply unfair. Furthermore, it is completely inappropriate and disrespectful for school staff to accuse minor students of stealing gold jerseys to justify this decision. These are young adults who have worked hard, followed the rules, and deserve to be treated with trust and respect. We have asked multiple times for clarification on why these uniforms cannot be used and have yet to receive a reasonable response from the superintendent. Therefore, we formally request that this year's softball team be allowed to wear the uniforms we purchased. Additionally, we have a parent willing to add last name to the remaining jerseys so that the entire team has matching uniforms as far as last names on a back. If this is still not acceptable, then the school would have twelve additional jerseys for future use if only the seniors have their last names on them. If neither of these solutions are being acceptable, we respectfully request a full refund of the money we contributed. We followed every step and adhered to every requirement and acted in good faith to support these assets. It is simply not right for us to have spent thousands of dollars on uniforms that our children are now being told they cannot wear. I would also like to add that, to my understanding and knowledge, the Report School District did not spend a dime towards these uniforms. They were all purchased on donations from myself, my mother, Jeremy, and Cassandra Vaughn, as well as our employers. We look forward to a resolution that is fair to both the athletes and the parents who have supported this program and donated our hard-earned money towards these uniforms.
Okay, thank you, Ricky. Um. And on my sheet is Kylie and Kylie Vaughn and Lily McNew.
My name is Lily and that's Kylie. We are seniors this year and have been the softball captains for two years now. First, we want to start off by saying, maybe for our language, to voice our opinions and feelings. Kylie and I have played softball since we were old enough to throw a ball, so this year is definitely hard for both of us as it'll probably be our last time we ever step on a softball field. Here, our parents said that they'd buy our new uniforms with our last names on them for our senior year so we could keep them. We've been excited about this since the end of last softball season. In December, we started looking at jerseys and designing them with the help of our coach and parents, we found the perfect jerseys. We've cleared it by Mr. Watts and have worked closely with him and the administration at the high school to get these ordered. First, we didn't know who was going to be on the team, so we only put the last names of the seniors on the jerseys. We did this so next year the school would only have to buy four to five more jerseys instead of a whole team's worth and we could keep them. This then caused issues with the superintendent, so we were told we can't do that and we have to put last names on all jerseys. That's what it a couple weeks and we were with that. After ordering them and they've already been made, we were told we could not wear these jerseys because of the last name situation. So even though we got it cleared, they got here this week and it was almost two thousand dollars in jerseys for the whole team, we were told we could not wear them. We believe that this is unfair and if there was a problem, we should have been told prior to ordering the uniforms. The jerseys came this week and have just the seniors' last names on them. We have two resolutions to this, one, we can either keep the seniors' last names on them so that next year they don't have to order four or five new jerseys. The second solution is that a parent offered to put everyone's last names on the back of our jerseys for free. Or third one we came up with today, if you guys allow us to wear these jerseys, we can fundraise for new jerseys for next year. Another issue that came up as to why we should be able to wear our new jerseys is because we do not have enough old jerseys for our team. There are several missing of one color and multiple missing of both colors. One thing Kylie and I are most upset about is that the school administration blaming us for stealing the jerseys, I was offering to keep them, so we would have to wear new jerseys. We find it highly inappropriate, disrespectful and hurtful by your administration when accused of, accused us of stealing our own personal name. If any of you know Kylie and I, we would never do that, nor would we have keys and access to even do that. This is, this isn't the only problem with softball programs, let me introduce Title Nine. Title Nine states that boys and girls should be equal when it comes to sports. Last year, we could not use the jump to hit anymore since we got new jump floors. So when it was raining, we had nowhere to hit. The boys, on the other hand, have a batting cage that we could not use, so all last year we had no place to hit, it was raining. This is a violation of Title Nine. We suck it out all last year with no complaints. Last softball season was a roller coaster and I choose not to ride it again. This year, we have a solid coaching staff, all of us girls are getting along, having fun and are through thoroughly enjoying this season so far. It's unfortunate that the season, we have all come together as a team and the superintendent is trying to turn that thought over something so little. This year, I was really looking forward to our jerseys for our last year. All I want is to wear them this year and next year they can go back to wearing the old ones or the ones we purchased this year. We would really like an answer by the end of this week since our first game is Tuesday. Thank you all for listening and hearing me out and thank you Coach Watts for being so great through this whole process and hope.
Based on what?
At the end, I have examples of our old jerseys and how. They're almost destroyed. So my name's Kylie Vaughn, I'm a senior at RCCS and the captain of the softball team. A few years ago, a parent of baseball player donated money for the whole baseball team to get rain jackets with their last names on it. A parent donated this money, it's the same way we ordered these jerseys. The boys got to bring those rain jackets home and keep them. This year, Coach Watts was the one Lily and I went to town to order these jerseys, as neither of our parents or Lily and I have ever done it. Allegedly, it was okay to write the checks to the school and we were told that it was the easiest way. Sherry Walt failed to inform us that if the checks were written in the school's name, that the money and whatever the money was used to order would be property of the school. We were completely unaware of this rule until weeks after the order was placed and the process of being made. This is frustrating and deeply disappointing, disappointed Lily and I, as these jerseys were the one physical memory we could get from our last year. From our last year playing our favorite sport as Lady Braves. It also bothers all of the other players as they had helped design jerseys. We were then informed that John Zookbee was the one that made the decision that the jerseys were not to be worn. Now, we are informed that John Zookbee, our superintendent, went to Coach Watts's office and took them. I would also like to make the point that Sherry Walt informed us that the money that was donated for these jerseys would go to our softball ASB account. That brings me to the point where we have ASB accounts for prom and homecoming that is used for keepsakes. Those accounts purchase things for dances so that we get to bring them home and keep forever. Furthermore, our softball ASB account purchased our softball sweatshirts for last year. Those sweatshirts had our number and our last names on the back. The sales flyers went home with us and we all still have them to this day. Our head coach, Bob LeBarre, helped with these jerseys, just as our coach last year helped with our sweaters that we got to keep. My last point is that our jerseys from last year are not to, are not fit to go through another season. Our jersey tops are seen through and the seams are coming out. Another point is that our pants have holes everywhere and could be considered questionable when faced with dress code. The pants didn't fit after some of the first clothes. Now, allow me to bring up Title Nine. Every year, the baseball team has purchased new pants, the softball team has wore the same pair of pants since my freshman year. The jerseys that were ordered this year were made to fit every individual player. If I may ask, if we aren't allowed to wear our new jerseys and can't even, if we wanted to, wear our old ones? Then I have. Pants. Stained with dirt and sweat. Holes everywhere. Jerseys with sweat stains and holes, seams popping out everywhere, sweat stains. And you can see, this is the right one. The seams are completely falling apart. This is how it's supposed to look. And this is.
Thank you, Kylie.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
Well. Um. Everybody's comments have brought up questions that I'd like to see answers to. Um, so.
My point, that when this whole thing came to the board, the only information we had was that it was a donation to the school. With the kids' names on them. That is the only information we have, there are a lot of backstory as well. Right, I understand that, but just, I wanted to clarify for you that what we were voting on and what we made a decision on was. The school taking ownership of jerseys that had names on them, that's it.
I think you were given wrong information though, that, that money wasn't donated.
It's, it's okay, we, we heard all of that.
Um, presenters that have spoke so far, um. I need to get quick from that, sorry. Um, you know, some of the comments have raised questions for me, so. You're good about. Decision tonight, um, I will, I'll meet with the rest of the board, cops and other folks. And I will make sure that I get back to each and every one of you so that you'll be, you'll have a notice of what board's decision is tonight. You are waiting for this vote tonight, thank you very much, you were very good. And stayed within, within a time limit, and the presenter sent you again, so. The board will, um. I'm gonna like I said, look for some answers to some questions raised tonight and, and then I will make sure that you get some answers back. Anybody else have anything to add?
Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, March eighteenth at four thirty into home game.
Should be able to call up some answers before that, right?
Yeah. Okay. Um, Kim Clardy.
I just wanted to, um, I don't understand how we can hire. And we can temporarily hire somebody and have that person be under their mother or their supervisor and the job is not even brought to the eyes of essentially us.
Um, Kim, I'm gonna stop you right there because, um. You're bringing something to the board that, you know, falls under personnel that, you know, is not, we're not gonna spook at it, it's a public meeting. Um, so, but you wanna present that information to the superintendent. Well, that's not a call, that's not a call for answers though, I think he will. All right. Yeah, if you wanna swing by the district office, Kim, there is a policy for complaints and we do follow that to the team. All right, let's move into. Reports.
Um, Mr. Jones, allow just a minute for Patrick to switch over the slide deck. Um, IRE as a PowerPoint we're gonna put on the board for you guys, so. Once.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the statement.
Hey, y'all ready to house some lunch? Let's see here, okay, so this is my teacher report, I've made a, a board report slide for you, so if we can go next slide. So Highland initiatives that have been happening, there was a hundred day celebration. Um, my daughter asked to borrow things out of my closet for that because I am old, is what she said. Um, the second graders did a hundred and first day celebration and had Dalmatian theme and decorated their classroom in Dalmatians. There was an escape room reading event that not only drew in, um, elementary kids, but also middle school students. Uh, Mr. Adams actually had to cancel esports that night, so all of his kids went to escape room events, so that was great. Science night in January was a hit, um, the elementary students made Valentine's Day cards for the Aiden Senior Living Center. And there's been lots of filtrates, so we're super proud of Highlands. Okay, so, um, RCCS, our work with IRE continues even though we don't have Vanessa Collins on site all the time. We've taken what she has taught us and we have continued to do that work, yes, Carrie?
What is I, 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 I R R E?
I am so glad you asked, it's the Institute for Research and Reform in Education and I only know that by heart because I typed it in a paper like twenty times. This week, okay. Um, so it, it's a process that, can we actually go to the slide that looks like this for a second? Okay, awesome, so it's a process that takes teachers through designing curriculum for all the standards themselves. So it's actually a pretty lengthy process, I'm not gonna go over every single one of these right now, but, um, I won't torture you. But I gladly send these slides to you and if you have any questions about this process, I'm happy to go through it. Um, and if you'd like me to go through one of my lesson plans, um, I'd love to talk shop any day, so. Um, basically, we're taking the standards, we're designing instruction from those standards and then there were grading with assessments that, um, use just those standards. So it's a very isolated grading, a few standards at a time sort of do. Awesome, I know if we could go back to the one that we were on with the hedge hall, okay. Um, so we've gone through a process of grade points and this was really cool, we actually divided our staff. Um, the staff that did a book study on the Great Quinns book, the red one. And. Sorry, um, so the Great Quinns book and. We took those five people that participated in that book study and they all taught groups of other teachers in the building. So we did taught it, it was great, we counted on each other to be teaching us that information. So Great Quinns is, we're taking all the behavior stuff out of the grades, you know, that like. You get an A for signing something and bringing it back, um, permission slip stuff, or you were good today, you didn't do any work, but you were good, so you get an A. That sort of stuff, we're taking that out, we're just grading standards and we're getting ready to report on behaviors separately. Okay, so the grades are the grades, behaviors are the behavior. So the sixteen habits of mind, that's character traits that we would be grading kids on, the character traits we wanna see, like persistence. And I said grade, we would be reporting to the parents of us, those are not grades, okay? Uh, like persistence, um, and impulse control, impulse control is actually, um, a better indicator than test scores. About whether it is gonna be successful in life, whether you have impulse control over your own self. Okay. So we've kinda gone over that, okay, so some RCCS initiatives, we have the fast track credit recovery going on. That's, uh, been very successful, we have a middle school creative writing class. Um, with the, the kids are planning to put together a, um, some kind of display that people can come walk through. And that should be coming up here at the end of the year. We've had a study hall for middle school, which is great, those kids get in there to get their stuff done. Um, we have a college now ready program for the 11th and 12th graders, an art club, a tabletop game club. Uh, we are teaching in our advisory class, weight finder, which is a social emotional development. Uh, NPE, the kids took the Department of Justice physical abilities test, which is like an obstacle course. Um, I have not taken it, but I'm sure they did much better than I would do. Uh, Laurel M. Qua Hospital has partnered with us for health and careers exploration. And the student council member, uh, was invited to sit on the city of Reedports actual council, which is really cool. I love that, as a government teacher, that warms my heart. Um, there's been a freshman coding class, a digital media podcast unit, your book winter pages are completed, they'll be completed by spring break. And then the last thing I'd like to talk to you all about is house points. So house points, um, we're divided into four houses, we're one school, four houses. And each house stands for a character trait that we wanna see in our kids and each kid gets one to a house. They work for academic points and citizenship points. And at the end of the year, the team with the most points, everybody gets to go to the dance, but the team with the most points gets their colors worn. Um, and it has occurred to me, and I asked permission from my principal, y'all haven't been put in houses yet. Would you like to?
We all have what?
You haven't been put in houses yet. Put in our houses, Mr. Jones. I think y'all should be put in houses, can we bring up the will? This is the fun part I'm talking about.
There are four of us too.
Uh, there is, yeah, so, um. We could do this, this way.
Oh, yeah.
Where you spin the will and you find out what house you're in.
What's the, what's the other way?
The other ways, I guess you could choose, we allow staff members to choose, so that's not as fun as the will though. A pair is down for the will, okay, so to introduce you to our houses, determinosso is my house. Um, sporting my determinoso shirt today, it's the house of determination. We have hazelik, which is the house of, um, haruma's, the house of unity. That's right, and canatemia is the house of innovation.
What are the, what's the roots of the word?
Okay, determinoso is Portuguese, hazelik is Danish, I wanna say, canatemia is, um. What, canatemia?
Greek.
And haruma is an African language, I think, but I don't know which one. Okay, uh, Carrie Olright, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Sure, let's spin for Carrie Olright.
Does it stop itself or do I have to stay stopped, say stop?
No, it'll stop.
It's not gonna stop.
Hazelik. Awesome.
Now look, what is, is that again?
Hazelik is the house of camaraderie.
Oh.
Yes, thank you. Um, and if you send me your shirt size, um, we will get your shirts. We have shirts, Carrie. Okay.
Is it, is it green?
It is, yeah. Yes, green is your color.
It is.
Okay, and Mr. Jones?
Sure.
Oh, Mrs. Lasky said uh, Haruma is Swahili. Speaking of which.
Congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Daley, you ready? Let's do this.
Okay. Did you all have each of us in a different house?
Well.
The wheel talks.
Yeah, the wheel talks.
The wheel talks.
Okay, and Mr. Warren? Okay.
There you go.
Haruma. Well, what would be odd? In the sense that our word is so full for rumors, it's the house of envy. Here, please, yes.
Be by order.
Um, do you think we should wait for Bonnie and let her have the excitement of the will or shall we spin for her? You all know her better than I do.
I think we should do it for her.
Okay, let's do it.
It's a cost of not being here.
Okay.
She can, she can watch the video.
Thanks. Wow. Look at the chip.
I, if this one is a fortunate, it'd be a federal investigation.
Okay, okay. So that is, that is our house system and we, I would invite you anytime to come in when we're having um, house days and and see how that all works. It's a pretty cool process.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you.
By the way, guys.
You have having, I'm having.
One fourth times, one fourth times, one fourth time, one fourth, right, one, two, one, six.
Fill up by a lot of water. If you build a new room.
Any questions for Kara? On this window, we are getting.
You're not done. We said questions.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions for me?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Okay, moving on to Josh.
So fiscal is diving into budget, watching everything as heavily as we can. We did receive some updates from the state. Uh, they have already made at least two changes for our most recent state school fund. Um, in your monthly summary, you will see the state school fund has been adjusted again. We did uh, receive roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollar adjustment for this year. Our beginning of year was the beginning of year was about six point four, six five, or if they told us. Then it changed to six point one, two, four. So um, last month, my estimate was right in there. I think it was about six point one, three, so we've been able to stay in alignment there. My next piece will be continuing to um, try to ballpark that May adjustment that I have in June. Um, I am working with some experienced people in the field that they have some tools that give you a roundabout idea of what to expect, so we'll see. Um, and I will have a couple other items for you later. One is an action item, a resolution, I'll, I'll discuss it then. Then I'm not sure if I was in the discussion, but I also have something I'd like to bring out when we're in discussions. Any questions about financials? Was it last year, roughly ten, ten, nine, ten point four nine, something like that? Or overall? Well, we went to got that much from the state and our like overall general fund budget would have been about ten. Yeah. 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 Yeah, with the three hundred and fifty thousand adjustment for this year and the possible May adjustment, which proves up last year. If it is at two hundred and seventy-five or around there, it'll be a negative six hundred.
Yeah.
Yes. You know, almost six percent of our general fund budget is just passive, but um, enrollment is, is doing to Reed's Port, but luckily, you know, we forecasted that stuff and they're thinking about one is now looking, okay, our, our goal was to get to eight fifty. We'll, we'll see if we can get there.
Three, four, thousand, one, nine, five, sixty?
Five, sixty.
Seven, five, sixty. Since October.
Yeah, I had to give that, I had to give that update and we talked about it, I think, last month. It was September, October, I hadn't give that update. And I can't update it again um, for this year. This year's already done, but for next year, I estimated five hundred and, I have to double check, but I believe five hundred and fifty-five students for next year.
While reading between the lines of your question there, knowing that we have, we're lower than what we projected this date in October, we're having to, we can't make that adjustment on our end. This could bring money at the five, sixty level, doesn't mean.
So we were making the adjustment every month based on that enrollment.
We're, we're, we're not overspending our total enrollment because we need, we know we're lower than the five, six.
Yeah.
Josh, can you were saying, there was a, so we told you a sketching, what do you mean by?
I have, it's um, call construction excise tax. I have to uh, board entertaining us moving forward with that. And it just, it will be an action item, yeah. I just wanna bring it all for discussion over you guys.
You don't know?
Yeah, no.
Carrie? Very good.
Yes.
We could do that now, Josh, go. And then if we, I have maybe one question.
Are you in this one? Okay.
Wait, what, you, you wanna discuss that now?
Yeah, so I handed you guys all the, a little separately on the front, it should say we're in Department of Revenue. I should have set it aside, brought it to the board packet for you. So, it's the data, I think it's right in front of your name.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is called a construction excise tax. Um, I've provided um, information around it. So this is straight from the front page here, it's straight from the Department of Revenue, giving background around it. Basically, Senate Bill ten thirty-six passed in two thousand and seven allows school districts to implement this construction excise tax. Um, and it shows rates from previous years. I would get us the most up to date. But with that, for new constructions, school district in twenty-two, twenty-three could set a tax rate of one point four five dollars um, per square foot and um, seventy-two cents uh, per square foot for residential versus non-residential. Um, and the reason why I bring this up there is it's is to mainly be used for capital projects, so that's not for your everyday uh, maintenance and everything like that, right? That's larger projects.
Josh brought this up because I asked him to do some research on it. We know from other school districts around us that this is a way to pick up revenue sources. And if we have targeted locations that we're committed to spending money like capital, um, then money from new construction being placed in as a tax is collected into the school districts offers for purpose of capital improvement. Where this projects over fifty thousand dollars require a bid. Um, we might be able to start putting back together our buildings and do some of the things that have been difficult to afford previously. This is simply a presentation of an option to discuss, see where the board's uh, temperature is to this type of a topic.
Who would set the uh, the rate?
The rate is.
I, I can see that those are, those are maximum rates, but for example, on a two thousand square foot home, it's gonna have another twenty-nine hundred dollars to a tax bill. I don't.
To new construction.
To new construction. I, I still don't, that seems extraordinary to me. That's an extraordinary ask of anyone who lives in this district. We already pay taxes that are higher than anywhere I've ever lived.
The next step would be for us to go to our like local government and everything like that. We have to work with them and come up with an agreement.
Okay.
So if, and uh.
But what I'm asking is can that number be lower? It doesn't have to reach the maximum.
To, to, I believe it can.
It can, but it doesn't have to.
But doesn't, I don't know for sure, but that would be my next step, but like, that's kinda what I am hoping for from you guys, like, you know, hey, this is my concern, can we? And I need to talk with those people to find out.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. If there's a number we're comfortable with. Um, some of the benefits, I provided other school districts in here and they kinda summarize it really nicely. One thing, one topic I like that Newburgh brings up is since this is used towards capital product type stuff, uh, there is potential that it could reduce the need for a bond. Um, these dollars could help us instead of having to go out and do bond and increase, you know, taxes that way. This could potentially, you know, help with that. Um, it talks about what it can be used for, what it can't be used for, so there, there is good information within these packets.
Hmm.
The clear phone point, I wanna reemphasize that, then Carrie.
Uh huh.
Only people doing new construction, you understand, that would, it would definitely be felt, it is a large amount of money, but people who are already, are living here, already have homes, this is not a regular tax on them, or a regular tax on them every year. This is simply on new construction, the one time it comes up, and it is extensive.
It's a one time?
It's the one, it's one.
It's a not construction, so that makes sense, that it was not a, and it lower.
It's, it's that one time per new project.
Oh.
So the.
That makes more sense to me.
So it could. It would be a task.
That, that, it could possibly be subject, I'm not sure of the timing, I saw Millers coming in, when this is applied, there are, there are some detailed questions. Mostly, we wanna know the temperature of the board, even if we pursue this type of conversation. We know we struggle with revenues. We know their buildings are all in part, they have a facilities committee spend a lot of time and the very large number of necessary improvements. If there was a a turnkey kit, intermediate method for us to pick up money specifically for capital improvement, this is a mechanism that's allowed by state law.
That seems reasonable.
So it helps out the structure that we've been wanting to put out on high.
You know, Jack, looking down here, twenty-two, twenty-three, the line of residential max was thirty-six thousand dollars. If we collected thirty-six thousand dollars on a project, that would not build the structure.
Oh, no.
But it would have to be something that, we understand this pot of money is designed for us to wait, save up per project till we have enough to fix a roof or to build a product, to build a structure or whatever capital proven level activity, we, we have to consider that this develops a stream of funding for that. But if, if one one tax collected off of a project may not be enough to meet the needs that we have to do something.
So you have to go to the city council and pose it to them.
Josh has done a little bit of work, you know, that, and there's still a little bit more to understand.
Remind me again, Josh, that, that um, that tax rate would be different for commercial than residential, right?
Yeah, the, the front page there shows a difference between current, they, they, yeah, classify as residential versus non-residential.
I think the assumption is the non-residential project is probably bigger and brings in more, there's a maximum cap on the non-residential projects that needs to be established.
And one other piece of it is, I didn't find it where it was in here, it talks about what can't be taxed. And one of the districts here also just came um, on agreements between them and the county that beyond what the the bill says can't be taxed, they agreed that like we won't tax these entities as well, but there was a certain now entity we were worried about.
Anything?
Almost like an agreement.
For example, hospital, making one of their, it's not helping ahead, if we say we're not taxing.
Yeah, I believe that's what I'm saying, but like that, no, like, takes. I, I please welcome, you know, any questions by email, John, so we at least wanted to get it out there to you, see where your concerns are, that way we do prefer. I know what questions to answer and take to the next level, that way.
I think all my questions would be, what's the, what's the maximum potential here? I mean, we have limited development space, we're going into uncertain financial times, you know, there's a whole lot of questions that it brings up and what is the actual, you know, expected revenue from this? Um.
I can see if maybe, um.
I mean, how many lots are there, unbuilt lots in the community, for example? What's the average size home? How, you, you know? How are those? Over what kind of time period are those? I know estimated to be filled.
I'd see if one of those county departments or something can potentially provide me a number of how much new construction is coming.
We're just gonna drill down on data and see later where things might land, have a better sense of like what kind of fund are we talking about?
Would it, would it be too much, would it be possible or too much work to, you know, contact Bannon? And uh, they may contact Corvallis for, or you, they compare their excise tax, you know, to their programs and get a, you know, a cost tag?
No, I can definitely contact three, see what they bring in, you know, just to get, just to see what they bring in.
Because I'm thinking Corvallis and, and Newburgh and, and Dallas, you know, they're, they've got so much more area to build and they're, you know, three times, four times, ten times more active and new residential than we are. And same way with Bannon, you know, they're they're uh, building big homes or especially homes on golf courses or near the golf courses and stuff, so, I mean, constantly building down there. And the interesting to see what, you know, those comparisons are as far as money goes, revenue goes.
Yeah, I can reach out to the business managers and see what they're willing to provide me.
Did you say this was the wrong time? Josh?
On, on, on each project.
Because reading the line or read the number, it says just could receive three hundred, three, two, five annually. Three billion, two hundred, yeah, so a ten-year period.
So over, over ten years, you're expecting that many new projects each year?
Oh.
Wouldn't be.
So it's not the same projects being.
Now, if uh, if a person builds a lot, they have a project one year, they put a second. Now, if a if a person builds a lot, they have a project one year, they put a second project, second, that same person might be paying. On the new project, but it won't be on the first project. It isn't one time. And it's projecting work, but they didn't.
It's loving when construction is finished, basically, I assume.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure of the mechanics.
Or who, yeah.
Josh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be what some of the questions I'd ask when I go to figure out the agreement, when exactly is it? Imagine it says at the beginning, uh and just to do one time assessment.
Hey Carrie, again, tell you the only building the lots from Twenty-Second Street and there's one that the city of Resport runs up on the rescue. There's a lot, that's about the only building the lots of the city of Resport besides individual. Lots that we know some of in Masters Court, but great subdivisions out.
What's the, how many on Twenty-Second Street?
The first phase is like forty-seven, I would say, something like that. And then there's a second phase to it that's another like maybe twenty. Don't go near those exact numbers, they're a pot, that's approximately.
Yeah, and then I know there's another, there's another potential phase off of Providence Drive too, so. Yeah, you know, I don't know how many months or or they haven't even subdivided or done the fine work on that, so.
I'm not sure if it's entirely just. Barbara Winchester Bay, maybe potential. And that that clarification is something we need to get as well. Is it the school district's boundary or is it the city boundary? That obviously changed things. Or available space.
And. Quickly glance at that, you know, we, that money can be used to repair buildings in our heating and cooling systems in our schools.
Yeah, as long as it falls under that kind of capital. You know, definition, a large project, not just routine maintenance, daily maintenance.
Roofs, heating and cooling are capital projects when they get over a certain uh monetary value. Wouldn't do it for the, for a three thousand dollar repair.
Yeah.
That's 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 general fund, but a fifty thousand dollar reinvestment into the heating system would be a capital project.
That sounds good.
Yeah, and please email your, I've wrote down some of the past two, but please email your questions to John. Got it interested in, during their answers.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Is the better rounds since two thousand fifteen?
Passed in two thousand seven.
No, two thousand seven.
Where were you in two thousand seven?
Good grade, yeah.
That make me feel so old.
Yeah, two thousand seven.
Okay, any other questions on that, John? You're going to do the superintendent's report.
So. A little help of Charmin, we're giving, it's gonna be a bit of a schedule for. Routine or regularity of when. Different departments will be reporting, so this month we have the maintenance department and professional education providing reports. Uh from maintenance. Um reporting four hundred forty-two submitted form tickets for the fiscal year so far. Uh three hundred ninety-six completed, fifteen new and thirty-one in progress. We're fifty tickets ahead of pace of last year. Upcoming projects, they're going to do some. Roof coating on the shop at the high school with the liquid butyl material. Um that's that is a needed project for repair of that shop. Um we're removing some of the olive trees over here at Barone Park. And I think the total is gonna be nine. Two parts to this, um the trees are starting to drop a lot of limbs and potentially hazardous. Um the other reason is, we have, we had a meeting with representatives of the city. And there's drainage on the opposite side of the road by by the Forest Service. Uh swale and the drainage goes under the road, it comes out to dumps and ends in Barone Park. And so when we clear out the trees, the city is gonna help create a swale. So that the drainage coming in is just running out the sidewalk by the. Oh, the dog waste bag area, now the tiddock, just creating blood or mess, but actually. You do this way of bringing off and so.
Is there a culvert?
Culvert goes under the road and dead ends in Barone Park. And back in the day, which I was not a part of, and that was a forested lot. Jumping water in there was probably fine because it was just trees and. And in forest, but now it's a park and as it dumps into that area and this is all the sidewalk, it just makes mess when we have those heavy rains. So that's a joint project with the city, um we'll do the part of clearing the area, they're gonna come in with expertise and help create that swale. Um the. As we harvest these trees, we make them available to the community um to schedule to come in and change a lot of use for firewood. So we're um donating them back out to the folks as available. There's some wood capping on the concrete around the gazebos just for stability, walking paths. In Barone Park. Um they're trying to avoid trip hazards. The football field grandstands, the backside is up around Arthur and Bowman Streets. Metal has been shearing off heavy winds for third part of a year now. Um we got a quote, it's gonna be six thousand five hundred dollars to have a contractor come in and do that work. We're looking at how to do it in-house. The the trouble is the narrow space doesn't allow regular machinery in there that we would use for lifts. To secure the employee and get up on the project, so. Basically have to find it an off-road scissors lift. To work in there, um with you, you do that for around a thousand dollars from hard labor.
Just reusing what's come off?
What's that?
Reusing what's come off or?
Uh not.
Okay.
She's just taking a barrel, there's a tunnel underneath. So the the metal hasn't cheering off and the plywood's there. Possibly reinforced plywood that's there, but. The metal we have, I would think is a decision to cover and it is worrying if it just is kind of flying off. Yeah. Um and we are soliciting some bids from logging operations for some of the trees in the. When the elementary school playground here. We're looking to find out if the project will pay. The value of the trees for the cost of the work, so that it's a net neutral. At for the district.
Is this because of the limbs issue?
Limbs that were. What we got advised by two arbiters, arborists and arborists, that. Because they get so much sunshine, because they're not surrounded enough by trip, by enough uh shade. That the limbs are growing thicker than they would normally in a more natural setting. Because it's been so clear, that's why they drop so often and uh are breaking off, they're just too heavy. For where they're at in the tree, because it's grown just. So. If we can find a way to clear that out. For the value of the trees themselves.
The Doug Firths, right?
Uh.
Not, not the sequoias.
There's like three types in there. There were several types, so we got bloggers having to give us quotes, people who do professional logging operations.
There's two that kind of sit, two that sit sort of independently near the end of the pool. Are those in the?
Um one, in that playground area. Um it went in the big boy, around the the sheds. Those are the ones that, yeah, some discussion, um. And who doesn't, these, we're having to work with the city on finding whether there's a water line while I have a one-on-one, it's a part of the bloggers. Ask is knowing when when the trees start dropping, but what are potential breakages? So this is, if we do it a summertime project, we don't want students and staff in the way of their foot. Hope we can get in and. Receive enough down for the trees to pay for the work, don't wanna. We can't afford hostility. Any questions maintenance that can relay? Special education, um. Wants to report on some changes to programs. The first one is that they've put in a middle learning center. We contract adaptive life skills from the E S D. And we provide our own general ed, special ed program, and there are students who kind of fall in the middle. And those are middle learners, we've opened our own program in the high school. And our middle learners are attending in there, they don't require life skills, services from the E S D, they require more than just. What we have in our regular special ed operation.
It's open to the middle school as well.
It's, it's, it's just our students and it's like, right now, it's just uh seven through twelve. Obviously, we hired Robin Haddock as our um special ed director, and she's also been case management for the elementary school. Um that's been a. That's allowed us to get rid of two contracts with the E S D, starting to bring some of those things back in-house. Um. And Robin's also taken over the resource room and making sure that we are getting caught up on our students' I E Ps. When we had the virtual person, I I feel like we had some. Some disconnect on some of the services, and so Robin's going through and making an audit of where we're at, where the needs lie and. Getting us caught back up. Um Robin's also been conducting C T I training to some of our staff, which is restraint protocols. Uh that's something staff need to do every two years if they haven't. And finally. The uh transition synergy this year, there's a lot of work going on with. Making sure our I E Ps are getting put correctly in there and. That's a work in progress, but Robin wants to, Robin wants to prove that's actively. Taking place. So. Try to summarize those both down a little bit. Any questions I can relay to her about special ed for you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, this is the consent agenda, these are actions in the routine, routine, we can call, we'll discuss it. That's approving a minute of a previous manual acceptance of donations and similar actions are often having together one vote by the board. Um I hope that uh. Each board member's had opportunity to look at the donations. By the boosters and by the Aurora, the Sonic Lodge. And. Uh with that, a change of motion.
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda as written, the day approved by the minutes for February. For a big set donations in the booster association, donated rock and sand. Let alone drainage improvements at the softball field, four hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Boosters Association, or two donated fitness room equipment, two thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Twenty-nine cents. And a law of this armored garage, number fifteen, I'm doing a new bike. And the quarterly perfect attendance for our four. And the old interest going one hundred and eight dollars. Thank you.
The move is taken, moved by. Bob's taken by Jack to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, raise your hand. Passing unanimously, Mr. Sherman. I'm sure Bob will agree with this.
Maybe yes.
Yeah, you can pass out of the Sonic Lodge, thank you for that, by donation.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Interaction. Um according to twenty-five, twenty-six school board meeting calendar.
So in uh back of your packet. Now you're excited, this is proposed for next year. Um you notice the. It comes is coming in as the third Wednesday, a standing conflict on the second Tuesday of the month. Most of the rest of those follow the pattern of the second Tuesday. And can do a July meeting. It would be on the ninth. Been dark for the past six years, but it's. The board if you want to leave that next night or you want to. Welcome new members to the board, the August sixth meeting, this. Calendar is a, is an action maybe.
Is there any reason why we don't, we don't, in June?
Um they don't take office until July, July one.
Oh.
Yes, we invite them to the committees. Because usually, I may, we have some affirmation of who's, who's on and who's not.
The other question for the. Or calendar? Change of motion.
The voting, the first action. Angela, they approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school board meeting calendar.
Okay.
Today, the resolution two oh, before two five potion, organizations transfer.
Well, let's hold off on that, we gotta, gotta, John. Twenty-four.
Okay.
So let's just vote on number eight. Motion made by Bob on the approving the school board meeting calendar, seconded by Jack, all in favor, raise your hand. After unanimously, thank you. All right, Josh, explain uh act nine and B.
Yeah, so I would like to propose. Um a resolution of a appropriations transfer. The reason I would like to do this. Um it is first, I want to move money from general fund. Ultra one thousand, so that's our general fund instructional. To. Fund two hundred. Function three thousand, so fund two hundred is our special. Um. Revenue funds. This mainly consists of. Um. Two hundred, three thousand mainly consists of possible food service, fine food for the kids.
Is that? Are there? External funding source issues, is that the reason?
No, um our our encumbrance of to be purchased is showing over. Um food service has been doing really great and I don't actually think we're gonna. It's not looking like we're gonna go over. But the fund four hundred, four thousand, I definitely need to do, and since our system. I think a possible overage. This is like a, let's do it in one swoop, make sure the money is there, does per budget law. Can only spend within our appropriation. So instead of. You know, kind of just being safe, uh our one hundred, one thousand, we have like. We're coming in like one point two million under our estimation, so moving one hundred and ten thousand. Isn't, isn't really doing much. Fund four hundred, four thousand. We have spent almost all of it, and that's gonna, that's our um benching up seismic. And we had some tap grants for. Uh long-range facilities and some other stuff. So we've spent like four hundred and ninety-nine thousand of that five hundred thousand. Um four hundred, four thousand can fall into capital projects. Though something were to happen and we'd want to spend our capital. I want there to be some money in there to at least start the project, I can't do over, this type of transfer can't do over ten percent. And again, we have to make sure the money's there before we can spend it, so I don't want to delay, it's not like there's necessarily anything planned. But something were to happen, I don't want there to be any delays for us to have to do a supplemental budget or something like that.
So we're short on seismic funds.
We're not short on seismic funds, we completed the project. And I only appropriated to spend five hundred thousand, pro- project is complete spin. Completing it and our tap grants, spent all the money I appropriated.
It's pretty well zeroed out. But we need to put some more cushion back in because if some money needs to be spent there, we have to have some money there that is spendable. For pulling it from general, but it cushioned back.
So long we could get, five hundred thousand. Stay in the fence for the seismic. Stay in the fence for the seismic.
No, the seismic was a multi-year.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot more.
Okay.
That was spent throughout the seismic. That was just, uh, yeah, us finishing it up for this. So just wanted to make sure that there's. Money, basic spending to get there. Last year, uh, I heard auditors really came down hard on districts for. Going over their appropriation, budget law is supposed to follow, so. I just want to make sure we're headed to, into the ballgame is all. And this one unfortunately will have to. Read.
So what, John, what's the formula that you need to come up with a figure? So, I mean, are we gonna be coming back in the dreadfulness again in? Four or five months or?
So this is just for the end of our budget year, so through June. Um. Last month, I, and I should have this month, I thought I included it. Last month I gave you a paper that showed all the appropriations.
Yeah.
And so. Like I was, um. Our four hundred, four thousand is like less than a hundred dollars left in there. For the appropriation. And our fund two hundred. The system's just showing that we potentially could. But I think we will come under. But I just wanna, I wanna make sure.
You're creating a buffer.
Yeah, creating a buffer.
If you don't need it, then you put it back in the general fund.
Carryover.
Yeah.
Oh, carryover fish.
Carryover, yeah.
Okay.
It'd be a lot easier if we could just paper things out to general fund when we. Um, go over what we appropriate in other areas, but a bunch of a lot of those miles we have to specifically. Realign the appropriations, in this case, keep appropriate buffers so that we can. Conduct business without having to have a board meeting for these types of actions.
Yeah, the other option would be to hold a supplemental budget where we'd have to advertise and, you know, a little many. Budgets, so this was a way to put in a little bit of money in there.
Any questions for John? How did your game of them?
Make a motion to accept the approval resolution on two, two, four, two, five, the corporations transfer. Then a fund transfer on March twelfth, number O two, two, four, two, five, whereas. Great sports school district board directors previously approved the budget. The twenty-four, twenty-five this year, whereas already local budget law. O A R, N five, O dash two nine four. Dot four, five, O, three, two, provides appropriations can be transferred. With a fund from existing appropriation to another existing appropriation. Whereas the amount of appropriations in certain categories are not sufficient to cover actual expenditures in its categories. The total appropriations are sufficient to allow appropriations transfer. Therefore, be it resolved. Great sports school board hereby transfer budget appropriations for the twenty-four, twenty-five years following. From fund one hundred to a fund. Change of reducing one hundred and ten thousand. To fund two hundred. Function two thousand, six hun- or sixty thousand. And then. That's on the plus side. And then fund four hundred, function four thousand on the plus side, add fifty thousand there. The above revolution, resolution statements were approved and declared adopted on March twelfth.
A second.
Major motion been made by Bob and seconded by Jack. For the uh, enter fund transfer resolution two, twenty-four, twenty-five, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Captain unanimously. Okay. Your discussion. Uh, the board is still in need of two, twenty-one, twenty-two, but committee members. And the committee meeting will be Monday, May nineteenth at four P M. And the district office, correct?
Budget committee over here is the D O.
Okay, thank you. And the second budget committee meeting will be Thursday, May twenty-ninth at four P M. So.
I brought my member. Anybody else?
I tried, I didn't get one.
As could have, secured my potential member to a lunch date at Don's old passion, so we'll see what happens. Um. And the following positions. Will. Be on the May twenty-five ballot for the board, position number two is a four-year term. And position number three is a four-year term. The uh, filing deadline is March twentieth of two thousand twenty-five, five P M. You must submit it uh. By to the Douglas County Elections Department in Roseburg.
I have refiled, by the way, for position two.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're not up for. You want to take, you want to take Jack's spot?
No, I meant the filing on the economic.
Oh, yeah. And then, of course, uh, all corns war members must file the. Economic interest. By. Uh, file, filing opens more to fifteenth, closes April fifteenth. And if you. Don't file, then you pay your own fine. I think it's. Ten dollars in this city for the, if you get charged for not filing in time.
I have no idea here.
I thought you might do, I'm sorry.
I can make up an hour until my. Tell you what you're filing will be speed.
Okay. Also, under discussion, I was gonna say Mr. Board, but uh. I'm hoping that you paid attention to the booster association donations and that banquet and option is coming up. Um, April. Well. And tickets are going fast, um, so if you've been. Ensure that uh. You get a ticket, call uh, I think. Tim, did you say you had some next thing off or down at your office?
Yeah, you can call office, Susan, be here, um.
It hops on the thing, I know they got some. I think they have some left. You going, Bob? Um, I attended the reef banquet out there and they honored uh. Um, Mark Bedard, which was in, and it was a very good um. Uh, banquet, um, lots of uh alumni and. And uh, it was nice what my brother was. And yes, Mr. Watts, you were. You noticed. But don't worry, we have, we, we wouldn't let him talk too bad about you. We can't beat him, say nice. Okay. Also. More member comments.
So how are we gonna involve the uniform?
Um. Well, I, you know. Yili and and Kylie both brought up questions I'd like to use answers to. You know, we've already ruled on it once, but um, I think, you know, from the, you know, the passion that these girls showed and. I'd like to get answers to those questions and then visit with John again about it. And I'll contact you in the future, whatever everything. I'll do it quickly. I'm gonna be.
I would suggest you have a non-form. Post discussion.
Pardon?
Uh, non-form post discussion, is that possible?
Yeah.
Two members, yeah, not all of us can stay, but you know.
Yeah.
Have a quick discussion because you've got all the parties.
And I'm gonna be taped up for a little while, so I have plenty of time to talk on the phone with myself. Um, but yeah. I'll be back to all. After I cover for John, I'll be back to the donors and especially Kylie and. Moving. Okay. Ariel, you have anything?
Um. Only that I would say, you know, while I appreciate. The passion that uh, community members showed, I also wanna, you know, just caution people to. Not assume the worst of intention when. Speaking about members of the, whether it's the administration or the staff or in the board. People are just trying to do the right thing and we, we appreciate you bringing some of those points forward. They were all new points to us. Um, but I wanna just, I just wanna caution our community to, let's, let's try and be better about. Giving one of the more grace and not assuming the worst. Um, I, I don't really think anyone had bad intentions. I think we're trying to follow the rules and figure out the procedures and it sounds like a very confusing. You know. Information full experience, so. We'll try and do the right thing.
You caught me, my head, I wrote down a little card here.
Nope. I'm always looking up.
Anything else? Yeah, yeah, nothing, no. Oh, good. Um. Yeah, it, it um. Sometimes gets very trying. And uh. You know, I tried to read through page nineteen and um.
Mine.
That, yeah. Yeah, so. Good thing the girl.
Felt like nineteen.
Um, I had a question for Mrs. Watts. Is the community garden gonna happen? I'm getting this here with.
It is. We're actually gonna need to meet with John. Um, we have a great group that wants to do a collaborative effort. Um, you've got Unpo soil water, Christina Crockett, all these folks are coming about and wanna help and contribute. And keep our programs going, so we're figuring out all the logistics. I'll get the go ahead from John. Hopefully in the next week and we're gonna move forward with much more productive. The grant writing, exciting. Doctor Schimo is doing his thing, the, all the plans are planted for our first graders to build their gardens to take home the shoe.
Now, I, I was looking at some other school districts that are doing this and. I noticed that one of them was putting their produce into their school lunch program as, as ours.
Yes, we've already had that discussion with Chef Tom and Laura. Uh, we wanna build it into our outdoor schools programming and standards and curriculum, so we're gonna be making Native American bean squash and. Corn, right, corn soup, and so we're gonna be using our containers that Reef donated to. Have our kids that are in the grant program grow that for the fall and our menus. Um, Chef Tom's all over this, so it's really good. He's a great partner.
Yeah, um. Uh, I've talked to a couple of school districts that are, you know, that are. Bring up reach for, you know, and Fish Patrick quite a bit and I mean. That guy's gonna wear out a set of tires pretty quick because he's all over the place, you know, and. And nothing negative about India is tuna and stuff. I mean, it's just, and you know, so. It's kind of nice and I was talking to the school district down in Clam that's up. Henry, they're, they're talking about their, hey, they're doing a hygienic garden.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, all that stuff is gonna go right back into their school lunch program.
Yeah, we're working on it. I just need a lot of help. I'm busy, so I'm trying to get where I need to be, so I have to. Have a lot of folks who are willing to help, so I'm grateful.
There, I'm gonna. Beer off and go back over here in the corner. And wasn't there a gentleman talking to the city about trying to get some, a city lot to do a community garden?
I haven't heard anything as.
Well, I would just try, I thought maybe they might have a name. I overheard of, when I was looking for donations for the sports office. There were two people having coffee at Sugar Shack, trying to donate a day for a year down there again. But they were talking, this gentleman was talking to a lady about, you know, he was trying to get a, the city to give him a piece of property to.
Well, we can. Yeah.
So, but if I can get that guy, pardon?
Do you run spaces now in the middle? Well, we do, but we need to get cleaned up and we need to have it thriving. We need to have some cordaid, a little, I need a little help. So that's what we're working on.
We need some, we need some like thirty-six centuries of benefits to get up above your quip.
Yes.
You got a problem.
Yeah, we have half of it done. John, the district donated half, so we have half, half of it done. So we have those funds that we can meet with grants, right? So now we just, I just, we have to get it going.
I have something for it too. I just realized that I can find it somewhere in my. Polting stuff. I have a really cool. Pol top that I made of blood, three sisters, which is like five combination.
Oh, right, the core, yeah.
If I find it, I'll, I'll finish it for you and you can hang it. It's really pretty.
It would be great, actually, in the cafeteria at the high school, so that's where the, the booths classes will be baking that soup.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Watts, how's spring sports going?
Good.
Was Monday the first day for practices?
Yeah, this last Monday and then uh, they start, well. It'll be two weeks ago, come this next Monday, so they're gonna get their two weeks in and then uh, yeah, it's full throttle, starting on Monday. Weather committee. Um, yeah, right now we're not looking too good, but.
Yeah, next four or five days, looks like the next four or five days, the golf team's gonna be wearing.
They're all gonna be over at the Solent House playing. But winter, the winter sports went well. We had, we had some great, uh, great. Great things happening with the basketball, basketball programs and wrestling, you know, dude finished fourth at state. And we had four guys finish. Uh, dude finished third at districts and we had three guys finish sixth and we had girls basketball. Um, didn't quite get the turnout we wanted, but we had. You know, Reagan Murphy kind of led the, led the charge with breaking school record with forty-two points against Riddle. And then um, she also had a school record with five three pointers in another game and then. I believe in one game, she also had twenty, one of twenty-six free throws. So, and then obviously the boys. Boys team finished off season great. Um, they won more games than they've won in quite a while and I'm not sure. It's the first time they've been to state in, I don't know how many years, so they finished strong. They won three road games at the end of the year that were. Uh, crucial for them. Uh, crucial for them to qualify for the state playoffs and. Ran into a big horse up there in Portland, as jury witnessed, um, Portland Christian.
So, how do you compete? When your tallest guy on your team is six foot one, and their tallest guy on their team is six foot ten, and there ain't nobody under six two on their own team.
How did the art program do? Archery has won, they won state championship, so, yeah, and, yeah, and here is.
Bullseye and three D, and three D were donated all by reef. So that one donation allowed them to take first place in state. That's incredible.
Yeah.
Streetwear was all cocky with his suspenders running around our school and.
That's good.
Yeah.
You're a great sport.
Okay, anybody else had anything to add? Future agendas, staff appreciation lunch provided by the board, the Highland Staff Appreciation Lunch is Tuesday, March eighteenth. Ten A M. to one P M. and R C C S staff appreciation lunch Thursday, March twentieth. Yeah, ten A M. to one P M. Wednesday, April ninth is the regular school board meeting, Tuesday, April twenty-ninth. Early release for the bug fest with some make-a-wish. Uh, for Amber Rindles' boy. Wednesday, March fourteenth at, uh, five-thirty's regular session board meeting. Monday, May nineteenth is the first budget committee meeting.
What did you say? You said March fourteenth.
May, I'm sorry, May fourteen, sorry. Damn, I'm trying to think without that. Um, Tuesday, May twentieth, uh, school board election. And then Thursday, May twenty-ninth is the second budget committee meeting if we need it. So. Anything else in the order, positive, negative?
You were saying that Patty last week. That was true.
Uh, she, I was talking to her.
But she'd be a good one.
Boy, I'm telling you what, I, I hate to go to a gathering, especially a funeral. I think I'm gonna skip mine, but, um, yeah, there's so many people, you don't have, have time to visit everybody. Holy moly, I mean, the characters, it was like, and kids, you know, when I was at school resources, I taught drivers in, you know, and they're coming up in haste. This is Austin Jones, they don't have my driver's license.
I miss those, I, I probably forgot all about it.
And see, you know, and. You know, you walk up and grab somebody by the arm and say, what are you doing, think I have beer? Austin Jones, I'm twenty-two years old now, for crying out loud, let me grow up. Okay. With that said, I'm gonna turn to me. Thank you. Have a great evening, guys, thanks for coming.